Hi Fred.
What's up Jason?
How you doing?
I'm alright.
I saw you, you were talking, I didn't want to be rude.
Yeah alright. I'll put on the ignore right away.
Not at all. As my grandma used to say.
Yeah, not at all.
At all, that's how she pronounced it. French.
Is that me coming?
Hello. How you doing?
Hello.
Are you?
I'm pretty good, how are you?
Good.
I was just here.
Had to run into work, otherwise I would have been there.
You see that?
Oh yeah.
Hold on, please. Please, thank you.
Let me see.
Can you see it, please? I had residency, residency, residency in Greyston.
Well I figured that was coming, they didn't have any choice.
Chase offered businesses, great, great to get rid of the power plant.
Yep.
Get the hospital somewhere.
Yep. That's what happened. Yeah. Well it's not going to be the end of it, they're probably going to need more than that. We're still 500,000 short even with that. Why don't they just ask for the 2 million, 2 million instead of shorting themselves? Have you heard, I heard they're gonna shut the arena down too? Cause that's one of the things they're thinking of. Cause they can't, they don't have 500,000 to put into it, so.
Should have sold it to me when I offered, right?
Anything more about that, I see any of that they want to put out in the township somewhere?
No, but I'm sure, I'm sure that'll move it, don't you think?
They're gonna have to, if they shut it down, what are they gonna do? Yep.
I mean, I, you know.
I know. Yep.
I guess.
You live in the township, huh?
Maybe in the downtown area we'll go together.
Yeah, it might have to. You just have more than put two more sheets of ice in, than just rent from them, they, well then, did I have all the money all the time?
That's our money. That's our money too.
Yeah, I know it is. But they always get the capital offering money, so. And we got 22 million for Jacobetti, I think, something like that.
Oh yeah, to do, yeah. And the white one, side that.
They have lots of property out there.
I said before, should we actually put the airport in that area? The hospital should be in there first. And the arena should be there. Sorry project. Pretty good.
Yeah. Yeah. Well you could, could do like a town meeting or something.
What will happen is there'll be quite individual funding. Of course, maybe.
So I can say you're gonna have to.
You know, maybe won't be, cause you don't need that big, you know, the high school hockey, really push to be.
Interesting, you got some quotes on it. Yep.
No one will look that in the eyes.
No.
So somebody. I looked at him on the computer, but.
Maybe Mr. Otterwell dish up a bunch of money. Or they could have a fund drive like Beacon House could to raise all the money for, for it and then.
Is it open yet?
Beacon House? Oh yeah. Yeah, they opened up in December, I think.
I'm not a big supporter.
No.
So, it's my opinion.
Yeah. Took a lot of the money out of the community for.
For people who are in the community aren't going to use it. That was my.
A lot of people agree with that. What are you gonna do?
But I would give money to, I'd give money to the house and sell it.
Yeah. To Sanji?
Okay, let's call the planning commission meeting for Wednesday, May 11th, 2022 to order at 7:00 PM. And we'll start with the roll call.
Steve Haken in Lake Enchantment.
Dennis Ferraro, Eagles and Ness Road.
Bethany Cody, Lake Enchantment.
Jim Johnson, White Oak Drive.
Linda Winslow, Norwood Street.
Chase McCarthy, Plating and Donating Minister.
Approval of the agenda.
Still moved?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes from the previous meeting, April 27th, 2022, that you just received. Everything look okay, any changes?
Move to approve?
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Sorry, no motion there?
What's that?
Dennis.
Okay, now's the time for a public comment from anyone that wanted to speak now. Or wait for the agenda items, and I see we have someone from the public?
Yes, I am public. I am public tonight, once I take my, leave the board table, I'm nobody, I'm just the normal person. So Lynn Durant, 265 Shipwoods Road. I, board had a meeting tonight about some finances and what we're gonna do with the CIP coming up at the budget. So I thought I'd share a couple thoughts with you, since I'm here. Planning Commission is an appointed board, contrary to a township board, which is elected. And a lot of people don't realize that, it's really different. You have bylaws and ordinances, we have policies and ordinances, so they're a little bit different. Each one of you was interviewed, except for Linda being the liaison. But each one of you was interviewed for your expertise and what you could bring to the commission. And that's real important, I mean, you should take pride in that, that you have those kinds of talents to bring to the township, and we really appreciate it. You've been working really hard on the marijuana ordinance, which, you know, it's already in place, but that was a year, that was, that was a big job. Master plan, rep plan, and, you know, staff is kicking butt, and you guys are doing a great job. And the board does recognize that, so I want you to be aware of that. You are part of a group too, that brings all of your expertise. When we pick planning commissioners, we try to choose people from an array of the community, business people, residents. Someone with banking, someone with real estate, someone with education. You know, we try to make, excuse me, so that you can have a wide variety of experience coming to the township. So we appreciate that. But I want to kind of remind you about education too, that is available to. Michigan State has excellent different webinars, and I just participated in one yesterday. Another one today, I didn't get to finish it. Theirs are kind of fun because they're interactive, and you can have the chat going, and they'll unmute you, and you can talk during them. And they typically will have 50, 60, 70 people online. The one today was 78. But you can do a myriad of different kinds of education opportunities. If you want to become a master planner, you can. Township has paid for Michigan Township Association dues for the year for a township. So that the whole staff and all of our committees and the commission and the board can take advantage of the webinars, the individual classes that they have, when they come to, I was gonna say Barico, Escanaba, and have their conferences there, UP Summit every couple of years. We get a break on that and at a discount. So you can get on the Michigan Township website, you should have access to that, you should have passwords and be able to get in there and access any one of those classes that you want anytime, and you can do them from home. So I just wanted to make sure you remember that, you know, we did tell you that, but that you can practice paid in that education. So just some housekeeping items, I jotted down, I see you are, you're checking your mailboxes, but that's good. We didn't even think, I don't think, to remind you. CIP, you're gonna be talking about that, we have ARCO money from the feds and some from the state. We're ready to try to figure out how to spend that, so you can help us with that with the CIP. Linda will fill in on what we talked about today. And I'm just kind of curious if any of you watch our board meetings? You don't have to answer. You can check the agenda and see if there's something, you know, that we're gonna talk about you or something, or something that you're working on. And you can zoom in too, because Randy Rotary will give you a Zoom link, he has it for staff. And you can just email him at r@rotary@market township.org and say, I'd like to listen in on this, send me the Zoom link. So that's another opportunity for you. Two of you will have expiring terms this year too, so I thought I'd take advantage of reminding you of that. Hopefully you can stay on for another few years, but if not, try to let me know soon enough so that I can get a replacement. And if you're not going to, then maybe you have somebody to recommend. That's, that's fun too. So I just want to thank you again for your service, we appreciate you. And anytime, you know, if you need to call me or anybody, the board's willing to listen and we can help with anything. That's worth my three minutes, sorry Jason.
I'm not the jerk.
I thought you had the clock, stopwatch. Thanks.
Anyone else from the public like to comment? No one else, so move on to new business. Site plan review number 051122-1. Proposed 6,815 square foot office building to be located within the Zone Development District. Applicant is Forestville Crossing LLC, 600 Windcrest Drive in Marquette. Jason?
Sab, you wanna tag team this one with me?
Sure.
You wanna go ahead, or do you wanna?
If you wanna start, I'm here, you know, for any questions, but.
Sure, so we have the development team here, Mr. Charles Overstar, Fred Grandchamp, and their civil engineer Brian Saddleinen. This is a proposed office development at the southeast corner of Forestville Road, Commerce Drive, and Wright Street. This project is located west of the new movie theater, or not new anymore, but the movie theater. And I think we'll see some other development in this area as evident there by the, some of the earthwork that's going on. So this project's on the south side of Commerce Drive. And it is in the Zone Development District, where office building professional is a permitted use by right. And I know these are very difficult to see, but I did send you the PDFs, and again, so you can zoom around on there. I do have a full-size set of plans here, but this, or the existing, well, no, not the existing position, but the proposed site layout. And I did include in the package some land divisions that were recently approved. So basically, there's gonna be two parcels on this side and then one to the south. And we're reviewing this project tonight, so.
Which one?
This one.
The north half.
The east half or the north half?
North half, yeah. Yeah, it'd be the northeast and the northwest half, yeah.
Okay. You don't have the other, the other building second here at all?
This back here is just.
No, 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 building.
This one right here, the actual building hasn't been determined yet.
Okay, and this building is, is.
That building is.
Kind of like approximation of what's gonna happen there?
Yeah, and actually I think it's in code review right now.
Yeah, the elevation that kind of flipped like 90 degrees on.
Yeah, and it was used on another.
And it was from like 2019, so it's, it's just a kind of a.
Yeah, it's the same thing, it's just weird.
Cookie cutter building, yeah.
Exactly.
Okay.
Well what we'd like to do just is, based on the way the layout works and the utilities and everything else, we'll be able to construct the parking area and all the amenities up front, so that when this building does get determined and come in that, you're not bringing all that construction traffic across the front of this. So we'd like to be able to, to be able to do this great work right here, and I know they're, they're working, and the owners are here as well, in terms of trying to get this building moving as, as soon as possible. And then we've created easements along the backside to be able to extend utilities there in the future. Wherever we have hard surface, we want to get laterals running underneath those, those areas and whatever earthwork and things we can do to interrupt or not interrupt the business. I believe it's a dentist's office that's coming in right now in one of the, one of the business. There's actually three different commercial lease opportunities there, and I think it's a dentist that's coming in the first one.
Can I, can I ask, how is this ownership, is it a partnership between you two folks? Someone can own the building, or someone can own the land, how is that?
The, the land and the building will be owned by Forestville Crossing LLC.
Okay, so it's not a leasehold or anything like that, is?
The tenants, each tenant will have.
Understood, right, understood, but you, you did a lot, a land division application because of the structures on it. We got a number of tenants in the building, still have to go that way.
Correct.
Is there enough area for the fire truck to turn around, has that been looked at, or is that something that's still?
It's already been, it's been reviewed by the fire department, that is in your package.
They have all the, all the necessary information off this to make that judgment?
That's correct.
As far as turn radius and, okay.
Yep, they have run their templates on.
Okay, and there's only one, one entrance and exit on this parcel?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, to get any closer to that intersection starts to mess with site distance.
Yeah, the nearest hydrant, just so you know, is just off of the driveway between the theater and the, and the, so they'll have that forward run into the property if there were to be a fire.
You're gonna do a stormwater retention?
Yeah, the, we've reserved the, boy, it's probably 20% of the property to do stormwater. Not only for what it's sized right now for all of our improvements here, but there's room and the ability to do either additional detention here or create a bigger one there, when and if the third parcel gets the mill.
So just so I'm clear, retention and detention, the detention basin will hold that water and not release it, is that right?
Yeah, it's, it's.
Retention basin releases that at a certain elevation?
It'll hold a 100-year storm. And it has an overflow to release it, but it, but it'll hold 100 to per.
But then this one's designed just to flow at a certain elevation after it retains it for, correct?
Yeah, after it retains the 100, you know.
Okay, and then where does that flow to, is there, is that ditch?
There's. There is a county storm along the side of.
Just a ditch?
Yeah, it's, it's, and actually there's, there's a little more detention in here than there actually is a relatively low area.
But there's no infrastructure for storming?
At the intersection there is, it just passes it through the next. And we've also just recently given, given this to the county road commission as well, and our calculations for that.
What kind of landscaping you plan on having?
This, we, we found a recent one was resident, we thought it was TD, but we've, we've gone through the landscaping requirements with Jason. We're, we're providing a 25-foot buffer yard in here, so we're meeting the requirements per, per trees and shrubs of that. But we're actually adding a little bit more above and beyond that. We're also doing, we've, we've shifted the drive over a little bit from our preliminary plan to be able to add a few plantings to between the driveway and the movie theater. So we've, we've gone through the landscaping plan, I believe we meet it all. And even though we're not doing this yet, because this is a resident, whatever orders are being back here, we're looking at doing those plantings or beyond this.
There's some vegetation out there, and the buffer yard's generated by the difference in land use regardless of the zone.
Some of this area down here will be touched, but there are a few slopes as we're getting our stormwater in that, we'll be putting some plantings on there, that helps with soil erosion as well.
Want to explain utility connections and services?
Yeah, the utility connections, we will be working with your Public Works. For, there, there is an eight-inch sanitary line that stubbed to this side of the road, but there's no manhole or, or anything else there, and it's meant to serve this when this first was designed way back in the early 90s.
Good, good thing.
And you've had to do this a few other times. We'll be extending that, that eight-inch lead and putting laterals off of that, and then adding a manhole, which will require, even though it's only about 10 feet, technically it requires an eagle permit for extension of a main. It's, these have been done throughout the same development in the past, and we don't anticipate any issues there. It's, it's designed to handle the flow. We've, each, each of these buildings have their own separate laterals that don't require easements because they're on this. We've extended though to the back, because there is a potential that maybe this third one would have multiple buildings yet. We've actually are extending two sanitary laterals and two one-inch water services in case it, it turns out to be an additional split or multiple buildings in the back. And we just want to get that passed again, what I explained earlier, you know, any of our pavement and things like that, so we're not going back and disturbing this area. Stormwater's, you know, in place, we've added the stormwater in the back, fighting for future if we need to do things that we do have. You can see it, hey, so we have to make that reasonable here, if something else we're not.
Jason, can I ask you, as far as impervious ground covers, does that parcel, is there enough non-imperious service on that parcel to the right?
It's 5% only in development district, so the intent of the district along with general business is to really have compact development, so it does comply.
Okay. Now, that, that increases your runoff though, right? I mean, you have very little.
Yeah, when we, when we add more, you know, we've got quite a bit of open space right now, so that, you know, our runoff's not too, too crazy. But, you know, if it were to get developed harder back here, you know, that's in play, and we would have the ability to do that. The development district has, you, you can make this whole thing pay, but we, we still have a lot of green space in the area.
In the, in the back part of the lot there, before you get up into the back lot, there's a lot of rock in there, are you gonna be blasting any of that rock out of there?
The planery, no, and, and if you go to the grading plan, you'll see that we're.
I might not have included that.
No, you didn't, but in, in the, in the back lot, the, we've got enough room to build like a ramp up to the top of that rock, and we want to see what's available up there, and even though you see a lot of exposed rock, the area where we're looking at potentially going in the future on the, be the southeast corner of it, the rock drops off right there. So in this project right now, we're looking at filling, and this, this line is really.
Skewed.
Yeah, it's, and that's just the way you're.
Well, it's, it's representative of the conveyance that was made at the time of the sale, which you regained.
Which got reversed.
You regained that.
Yeah, so, but as you come up here, what we're actually doing in this project too, we're, we're putting some fill up to start to climb that and do investigation up there, so that we're not doing major earthwork in the back of the site, you know, to do something after this back.
In the upper right-hand corner of that drawing, is that a retention basin currently? What is that, dark, dark kind of?
Right in here, that's an older photo, it probably was, cause as this has been going on, they've gotten grading permits in the past to help make these more workable lots, and every time they do that, they do soil erosion plants through the county, and they do cement traps and.
That, that, that's not supposed to be Thomas Theater stuff, is it?
No, their Thomas Theater stuff's all out in front, up in here. Yeah, our line is really probably right there, it's about 10 feet off that existing gravel.
So that's the driveway that's gonna go up into the park then, right?
Yeah, yeah, that new park we're putting on top of the rock, yeah. But we tried to plan as much in the future as we can and try to knock out as much construction without affecting these businesses in the future.
So that, the park is gonna be on the south side of that line then?
Allegedly.
Yeah, I don't know what we're talking about here, I thought we were joking around.
I was, yeah.
What's the elevation of the, of the building plan?
Very similar.
Yeah, when you drive out there right now, you know, you see the level, we just stayed there, we're looking at verifying it. We're about, the floor elevation on the office that's being, is about three feet above the, what you see out there right now with the, with the dirt grade that's there.
I thought you meant building elevations.
Oh, the elevation.
Yeah, that's what I.
This is architectural stuff, you don't have to ask me what this is.
So Denny, this is very similar, almost identical to the nice RE/MAX building and the Wells Fargo building just to the east of that, right off here on Venture Drive.
Okay.
So there's a covenants in this business park, and all of the buildings, for the most part, have a hipped roof, and they have a brick facade.
Okay, thank you.
It's the same architect working on the plan, right?
Who is it?
Rich.
You're right.
Yeah, Northern Design Works.
So you're gonna put a, a kind of a rough road into the top of the back part of that?
Yeah, it won't really necessarily be a road, it'll be topside, it won't be like, you know, a full paved drive or anything, but we're, we're trying to do some investigation up there to see what we can do and make sure we got room, you know, to bear utilities to adequate depth and to try and avoid any rock exclamation, so. Chuck's pretty confident we don't have to blast any rock, so he's been in the business for a long time, I got a feeling he's right.
Want to dive back into the staff report and just finish that up? Or do you have any other questions? We have recommended approval of course, but contingent upon several items, which we've covered in depth. So stormwater, drainage, of course that needs to meet our plan and be reviewed and approved, which, that'll get going most kosher. plan and be reviewed and approved, which, that'll get going most coish. Utility services, of course, through Eagle with that main extension, that would be three E. Three F, the fire department will review architectural plans, which I understand were completed today. Landscaping is meant, uh, and then just signs and lighting, so signs and lighting always come typically afterwards, um, but these guys have been constructing the, uh, full cutoff downcast LEDs for our dark sky ordinance, and then signs, I know that, um, there's covenants on the signs, and it'll be very similar to what you see throughout the business park, which is the, uh, low-profile monument signs. And then, of course, other factors, just that number four, A, that the applicant shall acquire all necessary market county building permits as needed, and then a financial guarantee, uh, for the as-built and landscaping plan, um, that is consistent with all of our site plans. And we also want to make sure that you put address numbers on your buildings, because that's gonna be coming down the pipe here, so. We'll be discussing that later, I'm sure, but that was something that was brought up today, is just an easier way to identify, I, I believe it's part of our ordinance, but I'm gonna have to dig real deep to find that provision, so.
I'd like that, just because it's hard identifying some of these lots, the way I started, the one next to the movie theater.
Right, as opposed to, yeah, having a firm number, so. Uh, but I'm happy to answer any other questions that you might have, and of course, your development team is here as well.
Any, any, any questions from you?
I have none, thank you.
No comments? Bethany?
No, no thoughts.
Brenda?
So just help me understand this, Brian, you said that it has three offices in the building, is that what you said?
There's three spaces, there's three, uh, available spaces.
Okay, and one of them?
One of them is already being occupied, the new owner of that building, so.
It could be the LLC with, with us.
So the building will be sold to someone? No.
No, he'll be, he'll be a part owner in the partnership with us.
Oh, okay, so, a partnership, okay, I got it.
That's when the heads were divided, so that particular chunk, which is this first one, will be that LLC.
Okay, all right, got it.
Well, there was another reason why the land division was required as well, and that is because prior to ninety-seven, Commerce Drive wasn't there yet, and so that property was contiguous, and then the roadway came in afterwards, and so in order to separate those parcels out, they had to extinguish a couple divisions, so we wanted to make sure with Steve on the planning commission that we addressed those items, uh, and made sure that that was tip-top.
It's always good to have new neighbors, right?
Yeah.
They bring great ideas.
Steve, any other questions from you?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Need, need a motion?
It'd be nice.
Okay, so, I'll make a motion to approve the proposed blah, 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 it says right there, Jason.
I'll help you out on that, yeah.
Yeah.
With the contingencies listed in the staff report?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bethany, yeah.
You're welcome.
Second.
Need more discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, guys. That was great work.
Come again. I guess, yeah, great.
I'll be in touch tomorrow, Brian, thank you. Please, Chuck.
Yeah. Moving on to six B, special use permit public hearing request, proposed short-term rental unit to be located at twenty-five forty County Road five fifty in Marquette, within the zone rural residential district. Applicant is Nicole Hiserote.
Is it French?
It's close enough, it's pronounced Heiserote.
Heiserote, I almost got it. Twenty-five forty County Road five fifty in Marquette. Okay, Mr. McCarthy?
Yep, uh, in your packet, you'll see that we included the application, which was complete, uh, a narrative, which was provided, and by Nicole. Um, this is in the rural residential zoning district, and we do allow, uh, um, short-term rentals in all of our, uh, residential districts. Exhibit A provides a legal description for you, and interestingly enough, I've heard you've had difficulty getting a survey on the property because of this, uh.
I had, uh, sent two emails, um, one was to Van Nessel Surveying, and I sent them the paperwork describing the property, and they never got back with me, and then I also attempted to go through Peninsula Land Surveying, Dustin D. Taylor, and Mindy, she works in the office, responded back saying, unfortunately Dustin is going to pass on giving you a code for your parcel, the parcel description is very vague, and there are no section quarters set in the section your property is located in, which he would need to actually survey your parcel, sorry, we cannot help you, Mindy.
That's not surprising, and maybe Steve can help you out there, I've got another surveyor for you if you need him, it's not really, um, you know, required, you do have a bona fide piece of property, it's got a parcel tax ID number, um, I just thought it was interesting that nobody would come out and help you out, but.
And looking, and I don't have the experience that you folks have, but looking at the property description, I think it might be my neighbor's property description, um, a gentleman named, Jim Luke owned a big chunk of that property, and he broke it up into different parcels, and he sold it on a land contract to the gentleman that I bought it from, and it, it mentions going from the center of Wagon Wheel or Wagon Road, and Wagon Road, I believe, is the shared driveway that we all come in on.
Is that Harlow Shores area, is that where you are?
It is actually closer to Eagles Nest than Harlow Shores, so you have all of those parcels there that are part of Harlow Shores.
Right.
And then you have, um, I'm trying to think, there was a house that had burned down that, um, I believe maybe a doctor lived at, and then there were, was a house that a doctor and his wife, who I think was a, uh, maybe a, an assistant or something, in, in the medical field, they had retired, they, they were snowbirds, they sold that recently to a family that lives in Pontiac, Michigan, so it's a vacation property, and then my property, and then the Plaxos just bought next door to me, and then the Luke girls who had inherited that property, they're continuing to maintain the two rentals that are on the lot next to them.
So you've got a nice sandy beach.
I do. I think I've actually seen you before walking on Eagles Nest, I run quite a bit down.
With, uh, two little blonde dogs, maybe?
Um, no, I've, I, you would have seen me with my foster son at the time, he would be driving his bicycle.
Yeah.
Can I ask you, did you get a mortgage for this place?
I did.
Did you have a mortgage survey done?
Um, no.
Do you recall?
They, they came out and did an appraisal, but not an actual.
How long ago did you purchase it, if you don't mind? Last twenty years?
I believe, oh, yeah.
See, see, what, what, did you get it with a local, uh, bank?
No, I went through Rocket Mortgage.
Yeah, you might try Mike Mileski.
Mike Mileski?
Yeah, Mileski's good.
Nine oh six.
If you can get it.
Well, tell them Jason said you.
Okay. How do you spell the last name?
M I L E S K I.
Okay. And the floor number nine zero six?
Eight six nine, three three nine eight. Don't ask me how you remember that stuff.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll definitely contact him, because I actually wanted to get it done before the Plaxos had moved in, when they had first listed that property for sale, and just did not have.
Yeah, I think from the planning commission's perspective, um, you know, if there is a shared driveway access, they're gonna want to see that, if there's, that easement is present, then we'll want to see that too, I mean, it's one thing to stipulate that it's there, understood, um, but when it comes to a public hearing, if this moves forward, then all the neighbors within three hundred feet can go to find, and I honestly, I know you benefit from fairly low density there, uh, because of the state-owned property, both on the other side of Eagles Nest and, uh, and, and both sides of your property.
And I've already reached out to, the, the only neighbors that I see regularly are the Black, the Plaxos who just moved in, and I discussed it with them, um, and they're actually very helpful to me, because I back and forth a lot on the property, and they wouldn't find that, but I told them they should be getting something in there.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, yeah, so just so you're aware, that is, um, required by state law for any special use permit, so the state requires fifteen days notification ahead of the public hearing, and a duly called public hearing, and you were made aware of the fact that if you rent the property for more than fourteen days, you have to relinquish your P R E extension. Okay. So, um, with that being said, staff believes that we have a complete application, and we are requesting that the planning commission schedule a public hearing for June eighth, if you so choose.
Move to, uh, schedule a public hearing under special use permit for June eighth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, number seven, unfinished business, Jason?
None at this time.
Okay, any correspondence?
Um, yes, so, we had a pre-preliminary meeting for a, uh, P U D, pre-preliminary conference for a planned unit development along Forestville Road on the south side of the basin, uh, it's about sixty-six acres in total, and, uh, you will be receiving, um, at whatever point they decide to move forward, that proposal, so it is a mix of uses, all residential, um, different densities than what are there now, um, but I would ask you to read the intent in your zoning ordinance of the planned unit development, and it discusses things like innovation, uh, land uses that aren't currently available, um, and there's a lot of work going behind the scenes right now on the Forestville and Wright Street intersection, high-level discussions, like asking for ARPA money from the State Appropriations Committee discussions, um, because, you know, when the hospital was looking in our community up on this hill, Lynn was a part of them, I think you were on the board at the time, or the planning commission, so everybody was jumping through their hoops to try to get and accommodate the hospital development, and, um, and I'm, I'm pleased that it went in the city, um, it would have been nice to come out here, but that, um, you know, I think it makes the downtown more robust to have the hospital down there, quite frankly. If you look at the zoning map, we did a lot of rezoning on the south side of four ninety-two to accommodate an influx of doctors and support staff that we believed were coming, are coming, and we made some zoning adjustments, in the same light, we made some zoning adjustments when Longyear, uh, you know, supposedly were going to divest themselves of, of this particular property, um, and they had indicated at the time that they wanted, uh, scenic residential zoning, five acre minimums with the ability to, through a special use permit, to go down to two or three acres. With that being said, and with the County Road Commission picking up the Fly Ash Road, there's a real opportunity to loop that road all the way back around and provide some further connectivity from Forestville up to five ten by that way, so we've been having discussions with the road commission, the road commission's been having discussions with the township board to try to ascertain what our future development goals are, and I would, uh, state that from where we were looking at down south on four ninety-two, I think our next five to ten, fifteen-year growth spurt is gonna happen residentially north of Huron Woods along the Forestville and north of the basin, so we've kind of refocused that, um, we haven't proposed to rezone any of the property that we've previously rezoned, uh, at the request of, um, Longyear, and when we redid our master plan and zoning ordinance update, um, but I think that's where it's gonna go, and so we have a lot of folks working in the background right now to try to accommodate our growth, which is great, because that's what we should be doing, is working together to make that happen, so, um, that'll be coming forward, it's an exciting plan, um, you know, the way that they have proposed to integrate it into the terrain, accommodate the trails and the non-motorized uses, blend that, uh, type of lifestyle into their architecture, and, you know, we're not looking at McMansions here, we're looking at like cottage housing and, um.
Low-income housing, affordable housing?
No, um, I asked that question flat out at our meeting, because I would love that headline to say that, um, however, um, uh, the gentleman that, who is the CEO of, uh, Longyear, indicated that the company's been in business for a hundred and fifty years, and their bottom line is to make profit. That's, that's fine and dandy, but that's not necessarily what the township has to worry about, and I like, I like your question. There will be a mix of price points, I can tell you that, um, and I think because in the size and scale of some of the development, that some of it will actually be kind of affordable, if you will, because it won't be, um, like Bishop Woods or like Huron Woods, nothing like that, it'll be higher density, more of a community kind of aspect to it, with some improvements to Forestville Road hopefully, and pedestrian connectivity out back, um, so we're working hard with the developer, the developers, and with, uh, our local regulatory agencies to make some major improvements to the, to the transportation out that way, so, um, that's just a heads up on what's going on here.
So it'll be kind of more similar to Harlow Farms, except with bigger lots?
I would say similar to Harlow Farms, but with smaller lots and smaller homes.
Oh, smaller lots?
Yeah.
Oh.
Well, I don't know about smaller lots, but smaller homes.
Oh, okay.
And you'll, you'll see that when, when it comes through, so. Up until, you know, yesterday, basically, uh, or no, it was, it was on Monday when we met, um, you know, we really weren't allowed to say anything, but now, you know, we've had a meeting, you know, I'm not out calling TV six or anything, but the planning commission's, you know, allowed to know that, and, um, and so at the next meeting, hopefully we'll have some kind of, uh, firmed-up, uh, master plan that I can kind of send along to you, that's sure.
Well, it would seem to me that a planned unit development, what they're doing, is they're gonna densify it, is so they can get around, get away with doing like spot zoning, kind of like they did out by the Gulf.
That's one way to look at it.
Okay, but anyway, so my, my, my point was that if that's something that they want, we have a hammer to give it to them, don't we?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we could say, hey, we want to get some affordable housing in there, I guess you could, you could ask them whatever you want to, if they say, no, we say, I don't think we're gonna see any planned unit development out there either.
What, what do we define as affordable housing? What's the bet, what's the parameters?
The benchmark is thirty percent of your gross income. You should pay for housing.
No, I know, but I mean, that, that, that doesn't mean anything.
Twenty thousand dollar homes, three hundred thousand dollar homes?
So you're wondering what the average income in the.
No, I'm, I'm talking about what, what price range for homes would be considered affordable housing in our community.
Should we ask Siri?
Yeah.
Ask Alexa?
Well, it's not.
What is considered to be affordable housing in the United States?
Two hundred and seventy thousand.
Thirty percent of your gross income.
Right, so, so what's the gross, what's the gross, average gross income in Marquette County? That's the question, and thirty percent of that.
Well, family income or individual?
Well, if it's a family house, it would be family income.
It's around fifty-eight thousand, fifty-nine thousand.
No, no, family is probably closer to a hundred.
Is it?
Yes. Yes.
According to Coolishuck and the mining drone deal, it was 70, 74,000.
Right, yeah, between 75 and 100,000.
Two incomes.
I would say in Marquette Township, it's a little bit higher than it is in the city.
Okay, so your mortgage has gotta be a third of that?
Mm-hmm.
$25,000?
$25,000 a year mortgage?
Times 30?
Well, would it just be mortgage, though?
Well, 30-year mortgage.
It would be more than...
$25,000, think about it.
But it would be more than mortgage, wouldn't it be? Mortgage and taxes and insurance and all that wrapped in, so it's...
I think just the mortgages would be...
Oh, my gosh, I don't think people could live on that.
I guess what I'm asking is, to Steve's point, if, if we are gonna try to negotiate here on this point...
There, there's no negotiation, they're not gonna do it.
And then we don't have to do the plan unit development.
No.
So, so, so just kind of think about plan unit development, I was just at...
We have to do it?
You are one opinion on a plan.
No, 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 I'm saying, we collectively, we don't have to do it. If they don't wanna give, we don't have to give, is that correct?
Potentially, I would be, Al, I would ask you...
I'm not, I'm not advocating anything. I'm just saying that, you know, I, I think that maybe it could be like a give and take. If they're saying, nope, we're not doing squat, we go, okay, then you can have what you want.
Well, in that case, then let's go for pedestrian connectivity from the development back to Forestville or back to Wright Street.
No, why are you doing that?
No?
Well, that's what they're saying, they, they're not gonna give.
No, I'm asking that you think about those things, okay?
Well, you think those are, you, we can get that?
These are negotiations.
They ain't gonna cost them much.
They have to extend utilities, that's already a done deal, they understand that. One of the biggest issues that I have right now with this development is that if, once this first phase is built out, you're looking at 1,000 trips, potentially a day, already dumping out on a failing intersection. And so the reason why all this transportation stuff has ramped up is because we're trying to find another way to make this work.
You mean to come in from 550?
Potentially. So all I'm saying is, I'm asking you to be, one, open-minded, two, put your thinking caps on, and three, review that P U D language so that you, you understand what your parameters are when you review it. There are some qualifying conditions, obviously general health, safety, and welfare, okay? And transportation and road network, that development shall not burden utilities or transportation network. So remember that one, because it's gonna come up. And we're gonna politely and professionally push them, because it is Longyear, and they are a big company. And they wanna leave a legacy project behind, this is like a new thing for them. Normally they do logging, and they do some real estate too. We had a very productive meeting, you know, it was 20 people there, from the Road Commission, our staff, their development team, and... But we did, we were firm and fair on some of the things that we expect, right off the top. And I went after affordable housing right away, was immediately told that that will not occur. They're a for-profit company, the gentleman has to answer, you know, to his board of directors, so... You know, there's, it would be great to have affordable housing in the community, and I'm not sure that this particular area is really the area for that, because this is a highly desirable area with regard to recreation and other things. So we don't have to get into a big discussion about it.
When you, when you, when you provide the master plan to us, this'll show, this'll be, it'll give us some overview in terms of maps, aerial views, the sketches, whatever.
Oh, yeah.
But could you also supply us with...
Goals and objectives?
Your wish lists?
Yeah.
So that we can, you know, consider those.
I always make staff recommendations, and I'll put a few footnotes in that one.
All right.
Kind of exciting.
See, I mean, and this has been my shtick for as long as I've been here, you know, you reach for up here, best management practices, best of everything. And a lot of times you settle down here, but it's still better than down there, right? So...
Just out of curiosity, are they looking at municipal utilities?
They'll be extending our utilities.
Sanitation, sanitary?
Lift stations, yep, the whole nine. And the ultimate goal, really, is, is if we could connect the Fly Ash Road and come around down and utilize the bridge and loop utilities back, I mean, we could have a lot of residential...
How far, just, I don't have any idea how, what the distance is. From 550 to where this development, how, how far would that be?
Half mile.
A half mile, and who'd pay for that road?
Well, so the first thing is to correct the intersection, right? At Forestville and Wright Street. So I think Tom Anthos from Tri-Media did a study and came up with a four-to-five million dollar project that would assist with that. There's a lot of topography issues, there's some property issues, there's some geometry issues. So I think what we're gonna do is, we're gonna be in the process of writing a white letter to... Steve Arwood is kind of the broker, if you will, for Longyear. He used to be with M E D C, he's got some connections. And he's also connected with the gentleman who's on the Appropriations Committee. So now's the time, the money's there, there's a surplus of dollars for certain projects. We're trying to stress that this is our next area of growth. We need some help to make the transportation work so that people are safe pulling out onto Wright Street or there's an alternative, you know, ingress egress point. So all of those things will be looked at for that dollar amount. And once Jim Iwaniki gets back from vacation, which we believe will be early next week, we hope to set up a meeting with him, start to do some scoping, and then really fine-tune that number and put together a proposal. This happens all over. You know, when, we just got done reviewing a site plan, and when Commerce Drive went in here, and I was involved in a project in Nashville, and that was very similar, you have a large swath of vacant land, you run a road, you run utilities, and then you run stub outs, laterals, in anticipation of development. So now it's a lot cheaper for that development to move forward, because they don't have to do the lateral, all you have to do is extend the main. The lateral's already there. It's just, thankfully, that kind of foresight was done here. I mean, in some communities, it's not, and then you go back and you have to rip up the road and do all this other stuff, and that doesn't happen here, so I'm very thankful for that. But yeah, we'll talk about it more at the next meeting, and I'll provide you with some additional information.
And their, their plan, unit developments all over the country?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I know, you know, I know Steve, and, and he has a valid point. Yes, a P U D allows you to bend zoning. But it, it really should be saved for projects that are unique and innovative. And this, in my opinion anyway, does qualify as that. They're, they're tapping into our local economy and, and what people are desiring. They had a company out of Chicago do a large study, market study, and they basically, you know, when, when a target locates somewhere, they send a planner home, and they look at all the different areas where the populations are, and they say, yeah, you should be right here, and they start looking at properties. And this is kind of the same thing, where, you know, we need some residential, we wanna do residential development, we have this property. And so they kind of prescribe, you know, the scale and scope of what the housing should look like, here, what your price points are, here's what the development should look like, here's what the amenities people expect, you know, they're gonna run fiber in there, and it's, people are working remotely, I mean...
What's their, you may not know this now, but I mean, do, what would be their marketing geographic scope in terms of their marketing for this? Would it reach down into Illinois?
Oh, right, that's a great question. I don't know, but you can ask them that when they're here.
Okay.
I do know people are moving back and working from home, moving back and working from home.
I mean, I'm from Marquette, and I have friends that are abroad, and they come home in the summer. A lot of people come home, it seems, for the Fourth of July more than they do for Christmas almost. And so you run into people down at the Lower Harbor or whatever, and, you know, they read the paper like, oh, Jason, you know, it's so great what you do, and you're so lucky. And I'm like, yeah, I know, but you can live here too, you know, try to come back.
They're coming.
They are coming, yeah. And that's happening all over the Midwest, whether it be Wisconsin, my friends in northern Wisconsin, I've got friends that are surveyors over in northern Wisconsin. They, you can't find any surveys right now, because they're all out in the sticks doing surveys. That's because people are starting to be out their property, because there's a lot of development pressure as a result of the pandemic, of people wanting to leave populated areas.
Climate change.
And/or, I don't know, I don't stretch it that far, but...
Oh, that's true.
They, they want a certain lifestyle, and they don't wanna wait till retirement to do it. They've got money put away, a lot of people did really well during the, during the pandemic, depending upon what sector you're in. And, you know, they're taking a chance and making some moves, so...
Who wouldn't want one of these?
Here, I'll tell you, I'll tell you, you know, I, I met a cancer physician out of Louisville, Kentucky, right? Through a mutual friend, and they had been up in the summer, and they went wild for it up here. They thought it was the greatest thing. I said, come on up for the sled dogs. They came up for the sled dogs, and they said, you know, no. Because they don't realize it's 18 feet of snow and 20 below. You know, because it's beautiful in summer, but in the winter, it's not quite there.
It was a long winter, I, I felt it, I know, I definitely felt it. It was, I'm leaving for Road America tomorrow, and I'll be gone until Tuesday. So tonight's my last night at work, but I'm, I'm just excited to go, even if it's just down in Sheboygan down there where I'm going. It's just, it's like 80 degrees all weekend, and even just a few clicks of latitude itself, it's just a little bit nicer. Yeah, it was a hard winter, it was a long winter.
Yeah, it can be. And, you know, I have nothing against somebody making a butt. I'm a firm believer in making a butt, I have no problem with that. But I think that, I mean, I like when everybody plays by the same rules, because, hey, I can't get a special plan unit development for the five acres that I got and bust it up into five small little parcels, that kind of stuff. Because I think that it's unfair advantage for these people that come in with just tons of cash, and everybody sees dollar signs, and they figure, all right, we're gonna let them do that. And the long-term ramifications of that kind of densification out in an area like that, you know, it is, it is always considered initially, so, you know...
But it has to be under contiguous ownership, and it is.
I, I, I got you there, but I'm still saying that. When they said they wanted five-acre scenic residential, now they're gonna make acre-sized parcels, you know, I mean, it's like...
Oh, I, I mentioned that at the top of the meeting. I'm a very candid person, and I'm not afraid, doesn't matter who it is, to have those discussions. And, you know, I did put them on notice on some things, and what we expect in the Road Commission, that intersection's the most dangerous intersection in Marquette County. There's been a fatality there, and we point-blank told them that. I don't think we can, what we did was we talked about, there's, there's a couple phases to this project, right? So we talked about the negotiation, okay, well, if we allow this first phase, that's fine, perhaps. But we're gonna have some kind of development agreement in place, or some M O U, memorandum of understanding, that when Phase 2A or 1B starts, that there is gonna be an improvement to that intersection, whether that's borne by the developer or it's borne by the group. I don't wanna get too far into the minutia of it, but we're, we're looking out for you and for the general public.
How much public money's gonna be used in this?
Well, not a lot, because the developer, per ordinance, is required to extend utilities and...
So, I mean, considering Arwood's former position, that would just, I'm nothing against him, I just, but you would think maybe he would drive...
Potentially a lot of money would come from the state to assist us, and that's what we're, what we're after. And that's something that he's good at, you know, he can, he can have those highbrow discussions with the legislators, I don't really care to do that unless it had some direct benefit to us, which if it, if it boils down to it, I'd be happy to attend the meeting too. But I guess my point is that we're trying to put as much of the responsibility on the developer as possible, because it really is, you know, if they wanna have this, then you have to give us that.
You know, my, my thinking, Steve, is in, in order to get more affordable housing, if you have smaller lots, that kind of makes it more affordable, because you can divvy it up and charge less for those. And then also, people that are gonna be buying these houses will be moving out of other houses around the area, which, those are more affordable than new houses. So it kind of opens up those houses that people can't afford to build brand-new houses, but go into these other houses that are 2, 250, 300, you know, older houses.
Still make bodies water, that kind of money, Jim.
Yeah, I know, but...
Yeah, no, it's, it's fact of life, the new normal, yeah.
Yeah.
When a two-by-five costs you 10 bucks, it's a new normal.
Yep.
Commercial development is, Bethany, what is it, like $300 a square foot right now, something like that?
It's hard to say anything new is affordable. I mean, affordable to who? You know, I suppose if you're a millionaire or something, you know, then it's affordable, but it's tough.
Well, you've got a dentist's office, and they'll provide some jobs, there's three other suites that are coming in. So, yeah, we're, it's lots, lots of puzzle pieces.
And maybe we should leave it to Nagani Township and Richmond Township to have affordable housing, and we go for it.
That's typically how it works, it's called reverse gentrification, if you're looking out, but...
That's right.
Yeah, you know, that's...
It's not that far to drive to Marquette from Nagani.
Good point. So that's all I have on the correspondence.
Okay, township board report, Linda.
Okay, so the Market Township Board had a regular meeting on Wednesday, May 4th. Some things of interest, we discussed, was a presentation by Elsie DeStardens on lake-to-lake cooperative invasive species. She talked about doing something with our corridor with native plants, and I think we're gonna try and do a third of an acre and put in some native plants and see how it works. So it'll be called beautification by nature.
The conservation district, right? And that's a wildflower mix?
Well, that's the plan, so we'll see if it can be purchased. She, she thought it was about 200, $2,000 an acre to do. I, I think it's an interesting, the median is an interesting area to plant, that's what I'll say. It's much more than trying to plant wildflowers in a field, okay?
Highway median? Wouldn't the salt just kill that?
Well, and it's about the wind, you know, no one keeps talking about the winds, but I plant the planter by the car rental place, and I don't worry so much about the salt, but I do worry about the wind that never stops from those cars going by, never stops. Yeah, I don't worry about even the people coming by and picking the flowers, you know, it's that. It's windy and it's dry, that's what I'll say, it's dry.
And it's hot, too, and it's hot from the road and from the vehicles.
It's stuffy.
It's hard to make grass grow.
Yeah, so I think there's a little bit more, but she's an expert, so, you know, she'll come up with something, and we'll try it. We did have a nice presentation by the library staff, and if you're interested in that, she had some very nice slides explaining the programs there and what is available. We did approve e-bike use, e-bikes one, I think they call them, plus one e-bikes, and they came in on a trail that goes through Market Township. So I gotta say, you're gonna see more e-bikes out there. Again, they're not supposed to go more than 20 miles per hour. Still fast when you have a five-year-old with you, somebody coming at you.
They're already out there.
Yeah, and they've been out there. We did, there's some grants out there that we're attempting to get. And then this evening, we did have a meeting to discuss some of the funding that we did not anticipate coming into the township. That would be the marijuana money, I'll call it, and some money because our township grew. So we have $90,000 there, $56,000 from marijuana, we have ARPA money. We're kind of doing, I will call it a wait-and-see, we're waiting to see if things are gonna be funded and what the C I P is gonna be. But we did agree that, we'll have to bring this to the board to vote on, but we did agree that we want some doors that automatically open into our township hall. So with people with walkers and wheelchairs and just trying to move with, after you have a hip replacement, they can just push the button and the door will open. And then there'll be, hopefully, some, I would call them touch faucets, touchless top faucets, so you just have to wave like in the bathrooms in the airports. So we're gonna look at that too. So, yeah, it's kind of exciting, I mean, I think just the doors is exciting personally, so, yeah. So we'll meet again next Tuesday. Can always listen to our meetings online. Any questions? There was, there was a little bit of concern voiced about some numbers on buildings, and I'm sure Jason's gonna hear about that from John Kengus, who forgot to bring it forward to Jason. He must got busy. So, yeah.
Address numbers you're talking about?
Big numbers so that buildings are easy to identify, like...
We'll put it in a condition where...
Discount tire, right, is it discount tire that has the big numbers? Yeah, yeah, because people don't know where they're going.
Yeah.
They did that in the city of... They did that in the city of.
Driving distracted, where is?
They're on their phone, yeah, or whatever.
No, looking for the address. Sometimes you're, you're, what, what, you know?
We did ask houses to put numbers on them.
Well, I was just gonna say, when I was looking for that house on Cherry Street, I think it was last, last time, I couldn't find any numbers. I. How do you figure out?
They're supposed to be on them, the houses are supposed to be.
There aren't. And it was.
I had to cut my lilacs back because she couldn't see my numbers.
Well, you, you look at the mailbox, but then you don't know if the mailbox is across the street or, you know, whatever. It was, it was tough to find it.
Maybe a reminder on the back of our water bill to people, reminding them that they need to have visible house numbers. Um, so that they're easy to find when they have an emergency. So it's really about our fire department, our ambulance, finding them.
Yeah.
Yeah, so anyways.
The city have numbers, please.
Do they?
They go wrong and yeah, yeah. We got told we had to put numbers on, on the restaurant.
Oh, I did, yeah.
Quite a while ago.
Yeah.
They have the certain height and width and all that, so.
Oh.
In the houses.
Maybe hired high school students to be.
Okay, thanks, Linda. Any rec committee report, Jase?
Yes, the rec committee met uh, right before the last planning commission meeting and proposed the um, N T N policy. To the, made a recommendation to the planning commission, then went to the board, let's see that that followed its proper channel and got, you saw the next day, basically, N T N. Uh, put that um, P R piece out about that. That new rule with the class one bikes. Um, and then they will be meeting um, again next. Two weeks, I think it is. And then the road committee report gave uh, gave Eric the night off tonight, seeing as I'll be out at the office for the next few days. Um, so they um, met, but they didn't have a quorum, so no decisions were made, but they did talk about road mates a little bit. And uh, he can give you a full report at the next meeting.
So I just have something to add to the road committee. Um, when we met with the road commission, we talked about Ontario. I don't know how many of you ride on Ontario. But they put up on passing signs, you could pass on certain parts of Ontario and we felt as a board. Um, and the road committee must have discussed it, that we didn't want passing, cars passing on Ontario. So we um, set for, are going to send a letter to the road commission to ask them to double yellow line it, so there will be no passing on Ontario.
Why would they even do that?
Yeah, this is why um, Jim told me they did it because it's a county road and that's what you do. Don't, don't, yeah, I was like. Warner is a double yellow line, but not Ontario. So, so, so we decided as a township board, with the recommendation of the road committee that didn't have a quorum. I guess that's what worked, right? Yeah, that we would send a letter and they sort of said if we sent a letter, they would do it.
You probably should have asked John if we sent it.
Yeah.
Then let's get more.
And then the other thing was we're gonna put some bike people along the bike lane on wherever the bike thing is.
That won't happen.
They told us it would, Jase.
Who did?
Aronski said it. What if we ask?
Oh, is that right? I've been told no for years.
He said if we ask, so.
Well, then let's.
Let's ask, right?
Let's do them all.
Well, we'll, we'll see how, you know, it won't happen as fast as I think.
Different roads are funded by different funding sources.
He told us to ask.
Yeah, and Ontario is a, is a Fed aid road.
Right.
That's why you're getting the pathway, which is really a vehicle safe area. Um, but for us, it's non-motorized transportation, uh, along with the storm sewers, so. Yeah, I'm, I'm glad to hear that he's reversed his tune on that because that would be really nice to have. I know as a result of the safe for us school infrastructure. You see there's federally required signage along that. Um, but we wanted to have that consistency throughout, at least where the path. Well, the safety maintenance trips were, um, so that's good to hear. Glad to hear that.
Well, we have a sign that says there's a blind child in that area. Why, why would you be, I mean, really? I don't know, Danny. I was wondering why they.
Planning and zoning reports, uh, that P U D and studying up and meeting with them, that took. Um, some time in the last couple of weeks since we last spoke. Um, the acquisition grant has been submitted. I did follow up with a couple of additional requested items. Um, that had to be turned in by the fifteenth. That was done today. Uh, and yesterday, um, so that's on par. The, the owner has asked for a purchase agreement, so I reached out to. Our grant coordinator to see if that was possible at this time, because obviously we don't know what's gonna happen, but she said you can do that. Get the purchase agreement together in a draft form. I'll be working with Roger Zappa on that. We've actually had an acquisition grant in the township before for. Adding on to Schwemburg Park, so we probably do have a boilerplate that he has, um, just to make sure that it's contingent upon approval of the grant. Um, and within a certain timeline after the grant has been awarded, if it is awarded, so. Um, that, and I know Eric's been addressing uh, some property maintenance issues that popped up um, since the snow melt. And. I don't, you know, there's always a number of things going on, but that, that's at the top of the list so far today, in the last couple of weeks since we last met.
Are we gonna take another uh, cruise around like we did before to check out? Like on the bus?
We could. Would you like to do that?
As well, yeah.
Before it gets uh, I guess, too deep into the summer, hey?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, let me take a look at that and I'll shoot you guys some dates. Would you mind doing it on a night that's? The reason I say that is because now we have a public hearing scheduled on the twenty-fifth. We have another one scheduled on the eighth, so we. We have to be in person for those meetings uh, with public hearings. Um, but maybe that second week and second meeting in June. Would be probably the earliest opportunity if we don't have any sightpains at the time.
Yeah, that's always interesting when we do that.
Yeah, no, I, I like showing you, you know, what, what's going on or what I know what's going on, what some of the things I don't know what's going on.
Yeah, it was real helpful last, last.
The fly ash road? Yeah, that'd be great. That's gonna be a class A road. I mean, it's built like a brick, you know, what house. There's a couple of super elevation changes that need to be made. Um, one of my good friends, Tom Fury. Um, uh, has been driving that road for about twenty years and he um, has some particular spots that. I told him that I would relate it to the road commission about, I guess he slid off a couple times just over the years, but.
Be Tom.
Yeah, Hollywood Tom. But yeah, that's an exciting thing, because initially that, the road commission balked, um, because. I believe it was We Energies wanting the road commission to assume all the liabilities for any of the fly ash that might have. Um, flown off and distributed uh, into the soils or whatever, um, but apparently that's been. Rectified and they're closing in early June on it, so that's, it's really, really great for the township.
Where is this road?
So just when you go over the tracks out on five fifty, there's that gate and there's a huge road right next to the power line. That will be.
I got it.
Brought into the county uh, uh, road network.
Great Viking.
Great Viking, it leads right out to N T N's trailhead, so it's, you're starting to see that, you know, kind of another little bypass of the. Of the community uh, occurring there, well. Quasi bypass, I would say, but.
So as you go over the tracks, it's just past and then to your left?
Correct, yeah, so it's not that far to make these connections and the road commissions, you know, they're wondering what to do with some of their ARPA funds and. It's a, I guess it's a good time with all the Biden bucks out there for, to make some improvements.
You don't think the, the ore trucks are gonna use that?
No, not anymore. Or they may, I guess.
No, I mean, they won't. Right now, they come all the way down, you know, and then.
Right, right, no, they have their route.
They won't cut through that.
Oh, I don't think so.
No, not unless we came down the power line uh, to where the westerly roundabout is and then ran a line straight up. Towards the power line and past Meyer there.
Oh, that, yeah.
And that would be right to the left of, or just west of here on Woods, probably be some pushback from the residents there about having a heavy haul route next to their. Large homes.
Maybe we'll uh, get a different driver this year. That was kind of a wild ride last year, I remember.
Oh, I know, yeah.
Is this guy a hurry to get done or?
He was kind of moody, wasn't he?
Yeah.
Kind of salty.
I was getting kind of scared.
Well, I think he was, he was angry because when I offered everybody to stop off, offer my house for some wine. Jason, you put the kibosh on it. I think that's what pissed them off.
Oh, is that it? Yeah, because you wanted to have some wine while you drove around public.
There's only six of us, right?
We'll just carry that wine on board, okay? Can't do that.
Maybe Lynn wants to go. She's never been on one. Or maybe you were before.
She has.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Long time ago. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, or we could rent a car.
I'll drive.
Yeah, there you go. You know where you're going.
Coming back from Road America, that'd be perfect for me.
Any more announcements? Any more comment from the public?
I do have a question, actually. The board didn't have any comment, but maybe you can think of something or. Um, North Iron Church does a cleanup or whatever every year. Um, on the first Sunday of June and they go to Newberry and they go to Lons and they go wherever they're needed. And they called and asked me to put together a list of what we thought we could use in the township. Help with. So I asked the board and they just kind of shook their head and said, I don't know. I mean, I, I asked them far enough in advance. So, some of the things that Jess suggested, because this is, can't think of her last name, the lady who's organizing it for the church. She said they have painted Playa View Arena for the city. They have um, taken down. Um, old sheds and people's yards who are incapacitated and can't do it or can't afford it. They have built garages. They have um, done cleanups, park cleanups or any kind of painting. They have roughly two hundred to two hundred and fifty people that will all be available this day and they have. Surveyors and painters and um, housekeepers and whatever. They have all these different types of people in their parish. And they all put them together in one day. So what she does is puts all these feelers out and says. Give me a list of things that you'd like to have done. And I did mention the corridor to her and I said, that's the kind of thing. The board was always trying to get, I mean, our board years ago, when I, three years in a row, cleaned it up ourselves. But it was a special permit with M dot and we had to have a vest and it was a big deal. But anyway, they don't want us out there anymore. And in this case, the grass is already kind of growing because of the project, so I told her, I said, that's really the only thing that I can think of. Short of maybe sending all two hundred and fifty people up to five fifty and have them work on all of those houses up there in the woods. All out, all the cars and the tires and the refrigerators or whatever. That's private property, but. Um, so I don't know off the top of your head. I did leave her a message Friday because I told her that would kind of be, she thought that would be her deadline. And she hasn't called me back for the list. So if you think of anything, even in the next day or so, Jase?
Just trash pickup in general along all of the right of ways would be unbelievable.
Okay.
We did say around the mall.
Well, and that's the thing she, I meant, that's the first thing I said to her, how about the mall? And she goes, we're on that, so, because they're there now. So it makes a difference, but just general trash and them.
Oh, on Ontario.
Any roadways, so they can kind of pick the roadways or do you know of specific ones that are bad?
Um.
Probably the main ones, right?
Yeah.
Fairwater.
Just, just general trash. Um, I know I've got to get a letter out. I went to Jimmy John's the other day through the drive-through and their. Target's retention pond is just full of garbage. The other thing, and then I'll get off my soapbox here, these plastic bags, you see them hanging in trees and it's just terrible. Um, if you go into Meyer in between Lowe's and Smith paving and you drive up that way, take a look down to the property down below. Count how many bags are down there hanging in trees. It's, it's disgusting and it's unfortunate that um. You know, that that isn't addressed on a bigger level corporately.
There's nothing we can do?
Oh, we can do property maintenance wise, but then they're trespassing on somebody else's property to go get those bags.
I mean, to enforce it with the property owners, you know, the targets and the.
Sure, we could, we could refuse to let them use plastic bags. We could have an ordinance in our township that says. I think they do it in other states.
It's been, it's been tried.
I think they do it in California.
I think you have to do it at the state level, because I don't think it can be any more restrictive than the state.
Well, then, but we don't have anything that we, you know, that we can.
Well, it's just general cleanup. Like, I mean, we have to get the word out somehow that, you know, hey, this is our time to shine, it's summer. Um, you know, we need everybody to pitch in and work together to pick up. I mean, I've walked Northwoods Road and picked up stuff just because. I'm embarrassed if my neighbors see it, like, not, not even on my property, just, it's, it's within the right of way. You know, any of the, any of the main roads, it would just be nice to have those cleaned up, like uh, four ninety-two heading in between. The America Mall and Target, there's a lot of trash down there too, so. Yeah, it's just, it's the ugly time of year before everything comes up.
Okay, I'll suggest that. Anybody else off the top of your head?
What about, oh, can you get your hand up? Nice, tough light.
Oh, kind of school.
Yeah, sorry.
Um, I know Jason would like an amphitheater. I don't know if that's possible.
I don't think they could do it one day though.
Or something like a band show or?
Um, well.
At the park?
Be up at the park anywhere.
Hopefully, yeah. Yeah, the Ross's are.
On their, like a future?
The Cellar's.
Project for them?
So.
What about, is there anything at the Lions Park that needs to be done that?
That's, that's kind of what I suggested to her. That's the only thing I could come up with. At Schwemburg, I called Springer and I said, are you doing those, the trails day cleanup? This year, I haven't heard, because usually you'll tell the board and, you know, you want to meet here and bring your shovels and it's always been a big thing. Because it's my anniversary weekend, so I always, Reg always goes and I can't, I was at the hotel, so it's the only reason I remember it, but anyway. He said that that's the responsibility of the rec committee, that they took that on and because he was part of that, he kind of. Absorbed the responsibility, so I thought it was his thing that he did, so nothing will be done this year. Schwemburg unless we do it, so that's why I suggested to her the two parks. And she lives in Trowbridge, the, the lady who coordinates us for the church. So she goes, oh, yeah, I know, we could probably do the Lions Field and everything. So I did tell her that, but I'll reiterate that too.
Yeah, let's, let's nurture that relationship. That's, that could be very helpful. And that's the one thing that I told uh, the planning commission. Uh, the difference between Ashland and here is they did have that, you know, community action group that would go out and. You know, if somebody had a really hard time, some elderly lady was a packer, she had a bunch of stuff in the yard, they would go out there on a Sunday and just help her out and. It would help, you know, raise the level of beauty and throughout the, the neighborhood, so um, yeah, that's a great relationship and. We've had other service groups reach out to us too that want to help, um, Rotary West, I believe, and so, you know, we should try to coordinate those people. And then planting, anything, if you guys want to take one of the roundabouts and you could pretty much plant whatever you want in there as far as flowers, so that would be.
We have to schedule that with M dot and get permission and there's, I don't know, pages.
But I can assist with that too, if, if, if there's a, a, a group that wanted to break off and do something like that, just, you know, ask them what they're interested in and. What they're able to do and what they're willing to do and we can work from there. Can't turn away volunteers, that's for sure.
Okay.
Um, I was thinking for the church, um, our welcome signs coming into town and stuff if they painted those. Remember we did that, Jason, that one time?
The beautification committee, yeah.
And I do the one, I, I do the one where the car dealership is.
Maybe if the church do, you wouldn't have to do that one.
Well, maybe, but my mom and I did it.
And there's that one by the golf course.
Yeah, and Mary Fields does that one.
Golf course and the one coming in from the west.
With the painting part. Way up there isn't taken care, but I think the, I think the.
The one on the highway, I thought.
Yeah, I think the staff does that one, so you'd have to ask them. I, I don't know that, about that one.
But I wonder about the painting the signs part. You're talking about the flowers, right?
Yeah, I was talking about painting the signs.
Oh, oh, painting the sign.
Yeah, so it looks nice and fresh and welcome.
Certainly paint the signs, yeah. I don't.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was talking about.
No, I don't want to paint those. Ask them.
Six, I think, entrances to the township with boxes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know definitely if anyone's ever painted a sign.
I painted one.
Did you?
A long time ago with Jason. I don't think it's been painted since.
No. Well, the steam.
What were you guys like?
Yeah.
I was just volunteered and went out there.
I've been a liaison to the Township Business Association since I started and you were on.
I was on that, yeah.
At that time.
Oh, that'd be a fun project for them. They might like to paint the signs.
Well, because they have painters too, so.
And, and when are they, the first weekend in June?
Fifth, Sunday.
Yeah, okay, good.
Yeah, okay, certainly don't wanna plant any flowers for them to step on, so I won't plant till after that, in case they do it.
Well, these are good ideas, thank you.
I like that idea.
The first thing I did to ask her was about the mall.
Yeah.
If they would do that and she goes, oh yeah, we're on that, so.
So the mall's not private property?
Well, they're part of it, so they can, you know, they're a good.
Clean it up.
It's with Joe, I think his name's Joe.
We used to, um, yeah, pick up trash in Trowbury Joey's one day.
They could put a new sign up at the Westwood Mall, that would be helpful.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe they will.
Well, I emailed Joe a couple of times now, I haven't heard anything from him.
They should just take it down.
I try to do that without sending a nasty gram to him, trying to, kinda nurture that relationship too, but I think I'm gonna have to put a letter together.
Yeah, just to ring that, it's probably a danger now.
Well, this is great, thank you, if you think of anything else, let me know, cause like I said, she hasn't called me back yet with the list. Cause if they have, you know, if we just have one project and it's painter and they drop him up here and he does it, or she leaves, then they can send, you know, twenty to Lance if they need to take down a building or whatever, so. They, they just want the list and then they can put everybody where they need to go the day, so, thanks.
Got more ideas out of them, Lynn, then we got one of the other board.
I don't know about our board sometimes.
Additional comments by planning commissioners? Steve?
No, I'm good, thanks.
I'm good, thank you.
I'm good too, thank you.
I haven't done either. Okay, well, I guess we're adjourned then.
Eight twenty-five.
Eight twenty.
You've been pretty consistent in an hour and a half.
Yeah.
Fishing.
I think so.
Fishing board note.
Yeah, we, we've thrown that around, but I think people like having a little bit of a break and then coming in.